Which one?
You ready, Alan? A call meeting to order, 601. Pleasure to meet you.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, Lou Glazier, Shannon Sturridge, just want to go and shame his stomach. That's why I'm kind of pausing here. Meeting minutes from last meeting. Motion to approve. Correct or whatever.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion from Shannon. From Shannon Snowman and seconded by Lou Glazier. All those in favor? New business. Safe review. A high roll is retail cannabis. Which we already received the application.
Updates are at the very bottom.
What's that?
Updates from CEO at the bottom of the agenda.
So we'll review this application. We'll go through it and determine if it's complete or not. So sections one through four. Sections five through seven, eight. Sections nine through fourteen. Alright. Sections sixteen through twenty, fifty. Skip. Sections twenty through twenty-four. Sections twenty-five. So move. Motion to approve, to approve completeness by Lou Glazier and seconded by Shannon Snowman. Alright, want to tell us a little bit about it?
Everyone, those of you who know me, Tyler from Lane Road. So I'd love to tell you a little bit about my project here proposing. So, those of you that don't know, so the state of Maine requires that adult use marijuana sales be separated in a different facility from medical marijuana sales. So I currently operate a medical retail facility at 532 Vision Hill Road, that's a high roller, something Route 26. And so what I'd like to do is get into the adult use market. So to do so, we need a second facility, as the word says. So, just as a reminder, so we've been permitted, I am permitted through the town currently, my permit to say, gives me, you know, right, where are my words here? Auction, right, and it's to sell medical and or recreational. So what I'm proposing is I'd like to build this building that you see in front of you, it is a thirty by fifty. So it's ten feet wider and ten feet longer than my current existing building. And I believe you guys have a copy of the survey, not in a big package, in your small packet possibly, of where it's going on the property. It's going on the north end of my current parking lot. So, our plan is to add another probably ten to twelve parking spots and include another gravel parking lot to the north and west side of the building. The gravel parking lot will be accessible from obviously the pavement parking lot, it'll be for employee vehicles. So we can, we have a lot of parking space, but right now our employees are taking up a lot of it. So our plan is to move employee vehicles to the new gravel parking lot along the side of this building. Yeah, we're going to extend the parking lot slightly to the north, just to bring the pavement pretty much right up to the concrete slab. Now, this building, timber frame design, and it's going to, it's slated to share the same well. It's also slated to share the same septic system, which we've gotten approval from our septic engineer, which I forwarded my correspondence from my soil scientist to Alan. He's located, so we're going to be able to share the same septic system, same electrical options, and same water, essentially. So I'll make our lives a little bit simpler. So this building, as you may or may not know, so being an adult use recreation facility, this building is not open to the public, private facility, which means that you have to be verified with a photo ID before you're allowed to enter the building. So it does not have a public bathroom. Because I'd be happy to walk you guys through the floor plan if you'd like. So the floor plan consists of a large retail floor, it's the fourth page, large retail floor with a wall right behind the display cases. And then on the back, half called in the building. Half of that side is diverted to a kitchen, where we'll be producing edibles, goods for sale for inside the store. And the other half consists of offices, vault rooms, locker rooms. And the main employee entrance will actually legally required to be at the rear of the building, not the same as the public entrance. So we do have two separate entrances at the rear of the building for employee entrance. So that public can open the front door, but then they cannot be allowed past that entry testing hall without verifying identification for legal purposes. What else can I tell you about the building? We've already secured our additional driveway entrance from, excuse me, we're going to widen our, our current driveway off of 26. We've already spoken the DOT, we've gotten letters saying they were all open DT, and they have issued us a permit to widen that driveway, I believe, to forty-two feet wide. So it's almost doubling their current width, so that'll be a little bit easier for us to enter and exit on Route 26. What else can I answer for you?
Is that additional widening of driveways that can be paid also?
Yes, it is required to be paid.
Will there be an in and outs sign on each side of the?
Yes, we're, yeah, I'm hoping once we increase the size of our current parking area, we're going to paint the lines on it, you know? And then we'll be able to paint all of our parking spots, our handicap spots, and then as well as better marking in and out. Because as you guys know, on Route 26, the snow banks get really large and it doesn't pinch all of our parking area. So it'll be nice to really help designate and guide drivers in and out of that driveway.
I do have one note, I did get in touch with the DOT representative about traffic study to make sure that, where that was sitting, to inquire about where that was. So I do have a letter from him, but I, it's not a letter stating that a driveway, a traffic study is not required. It states that it's likely not required, but he hasn't submitted a determination at that, at this point. So as a condition, we could put in there, either the state representative gives a letter saying that traffic study is not needed, or a traffic study is needed, whatever the case may be. So if a traffic study is needed, then we'd have to wait for the traffic study.
Yeah, after meeting with the DOT engineer, his name is Rob Betts, we spoke at length about our proposal for this additional building on our property. And he informed us that the threshold for needing a traffic study is one hundred cars in and out in one hour of the day. So that's the threshold, if you're underneath that, the state doesn't require any kind of traffic studies. If you're above that, it does. He said typically, most of the time it's high volume businesses like busy gas stations, Roman Joe's, Dumping Jonas, those are the type of businesses that typically meet that threshold. And after reviewing the IT land use generator that generates the graphs that show typical insurance and exits numbers for our type of business, and it is slated as a code of eighty-eight-two marijuana retail business that in their traffic generator, they average about thirty-four, and I have submitted this down, they average thirty-four cars during an hour, that's just what their graph says, per one thousand square feet. So we're being asked about twenty-three hundred square feet between the two businesses, we're still well below the threshold. So I believe that's what Rob will, the engineer, will come back and dictate.
We had, we had a study that was given to us prior to this one, and it didn't generate for a traffic study, and it was sizable. In a very high volume area also.
Yes, it was interesting to see as part of that IT land use generator, now that's the graphs where the engineers look at it and say, okay, for a hospital, for whatever type of business, this is the typical number. They just added last year marijuana retail businesses to that generator, so they have current graph for it. That being said, the graphs are incredibly sparse, and they even say on them caution, small sample size. So they only have four data points on them. So, and I have submitted those down, so you saw them, they're, they're certainly in their infancy. But I think that I can say confidently, we don't come anywhere close to a hundred cars in and out in one hour.
Any comments from the public? Questions?
I'm Rick Bennett, I, my wife Karen's here as well. We own the land that TJ has put his business on, and I want to say for us that he's been a terrific partner and he's been very respectful. He's been very professional, and I've been really proud of the kind of work that he's done. He's beautified the town, I mean, that was a cornfield, okay? But it's also just, I mean, the care in detail and making a, the buildings that he's putting, that he has built, and the one that he's got projected here, and shared the plans with us. We think it's just really a beautiful building. And I, and so we're just excited for, for him and, and as people who are property taxpayers and mechanic calls, we're just delighted to work with him.
It didn't, it didn't get skipped, this building is also going to be a passive solar building.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. It's, it's really nice, the timber frames construction, I think is really nice for this kind of.
Here in the sign looks very good.
Yeah.
Happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Yes, the question was how we've gotten our commercial kitchen, yes, we actually hold three current Department Agriculture licenses through the state. We hold a auto plant license, a retail food sales license, and a food processor license currently from the farmer bag. Yeah, Lindsay, our local inspector is very tight with us, you know, she's in there all the time. So, and our plan is to, once obviously construction is completed and we have a current system, then we'll be able to apply again to the department bag for new kitchen licenses in this new location. Oh, if you know Lindsay, she will, if you've never met Lindsay, she will absolutely require that.
Are you saying she's thorough?
She is the most thorough, yeah, she is.
Well, these are good.
Yeah.
So move.
To accept the application is complete, I think, Alan, so we need to have some. Comments about DOT and.
You've accepted it as complete already, you need to make a motion to accept or deny the application and what conditions you'd like to have on. So the current conditions, I would suggest placing the current conditions that are on his license on this, on this project as well. And I can read those to you.
If I make a motion and we add your conditions that you're recommending.
Do you want me to not say them?
Yeah, can I hear what they are?
No, you can say them.
Yeah, yeah, just, you can just say that. Must comply with mechanic falls land use ordinance updated January first, twenty twenty, which will be different. It'll be updated because there's an update. All state rules and regulations must be adhered to, all state permits and licenses must be obtained prior to engaging in retail operations for medical or adult use or adult, medical or adult recreation use. Must remain current with mechanic falls annual fees. I was of operation Saturday, ten to seven, Monday through Saturday, ten to seven, Sunday, ten to six. No outside storage, ample parking must be provided for clientele. And DOT representative to provide a letter stating that a traffic study is required or is not required. If required, this will be done and presented to the planning board prior to the building permit is issued, prior to when the building permit is issued.
I'm, I'm cool with all that, except for the hours.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah, I would like to follow the, there is an hour thing in the ordinance, I believe, if you can't open earlier than nine or eight, I believe you can't stay open later than ten. And I'd like to stick to that if possible.
Seven days a week, right?
Yeah. Yeah. While you're on that subject, how has that been working out for you?
Our current hours?
Yes.
Great, I, I mean, obviously, we, we like to be open a little bit later. And, yeah, we're not a real early crew, we open at night every day.
Got the motion? Have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? You've got it all, I'm assuming, since you had it before that.
Lou first and Shannon second.
All business, all business is none. One, it's from the CEO, Alan's ready.
So I have looked at the, I had a question this week about the ADU law that just passed. So that is a law, meaning that towns will follow it. Accessory dwelling unit, yep. So towns will follow that law, it was made at the, in Augusta with the legislature. I don't understand all the details in that law, but it seems that we will have some things that will change because that deals with zoning and density. So that will affect our existing ordinance and space requirements. So I haven't been able to talk to anyone specifically about, about the law and have them explain that, but I have reached out and asked. They just, they just got off, just got out of session, so they're not, so they're taking a little break.
Can I just ask a question about that, since we have the codification process going on right now? That business, as these regs come through, do they immediately go in and take a look at our ordinances and modify them to match state regs where appropriate?
The codification process is supposed to do that, yes.
Alright.
So that if it overlaps with state laws or things that pass.
Speaking of current application, are we gonna get our original printout before they started that? So we have a product to go back on? If it all doesn't work, it's something to reference?
They only have, well, yes, they only have copies of our existing ordinances, we have originals. And when they, when they finish the codification, we'll get a copy, a, a physical copy of it. Which will be as good as the last, last time it's printed, because they will continually update the electronic version electronically, and we'll be able to see that as we make changes and present them to them.
Well, I'm, I'm always bringing that up because there's a historical value to having sort of documents, because sometimes things are grandfathered.
Yeah, we can't get rid of them.
They normally have like a version control that you'll have, so they'll maintain prior versions, so we'll have our own hard copy version.
I'm not real warm-hearted on something that's electronic. Hard copy is really good.
Yes, I don't know, I don't know the implication of all of those. Does. Oh, could you speak at the microphone, please? Make sure that's on.
Thanks. I said that I voted against this bill, it's LB two thousand and three that you're talking about, that was just signed into law by the governor. I don't, the details in the final version, it was amended several times in the process, and it came through very late. I personally thought that it didn't have enough time to really, for people to understand the impact in communities. And it was a huge change, you know, it basically changes zoning laws at the local level in ways that I don't think has really been thoroughly thought out. And so it's interesting to hear the discussion because, yeah, I think that there's a lot of people in your position all across the state trying to figure out what the impact is. And I'm sure many municipal association who opposed the bill right on through is going to be pulling that information together. And hopefully that will be help as you tackle this. It, it's a, it's a substantial change, not as big a change as they originally proposed, or even the second version that they scaled back, they scaled it back a third time. And, but it's still a big change of these zoning issues.
Yeah, I agree, because I, I've seen the information back and forth with MMA really pushing to contest it and, you know, kind of halt it. And it was just pushed through, and there's still a lot of ambiguity, I think, in how this is really gonna impact us, so.
I, I can just see four, four dwellings on a hundred by hundred lot, and they all got the service, and it's an accessory dwelling. There's nothing you can do to stop it. Not only that, it changes the structures of the communities, and it shifts the power to the state versus the communities.
Yes, some of that was mitigated in the amendment, and also I think the changes in the, on the four unit thing was, was, was limited to what they call something growth areas in the town, which it designated. I don't know if mechanic falls has such designated growth areas, so the, the impact for mechanic falls, I don't know. But I will be paying attention on it, and currently I don't represent mechanic falls in the state senate, but if, after the election, voters will have me. We did redistrict, and so mechanic falls is actually would be in the district I would seek to represent after the election next year. So I look forward to being a service to you and a resource for you.
Did they ask for ESG scores in this bill too?
So I do have the bill from the Speaker of the House's office that's complete with amendments.
Can we get?
Those don't go away, I just don't know how it impacts.
Well, Alan, if, if this is an accessory dwelling unit, and that's what they're calling it, that means it's happening on a piece of land. And it has to be that singular same owner. So as far as subdivision, I would think a subdivision is still a subdivision, because you're selling individual pieces of land, unless that person is gonna build condos on it and own all the condos and maybe call it an ADU.
Right, it'll still trigger, if it triggers subdivision law, it triggers subdivision law, and you still have to go through subdivision process. So even if it says you, you have to allow it, it has to go through subdivision, you have to answer all those questions in subdivision.
He's not saying yes or no. But then Portland should keep it and leave us alone. So does this mean I can put fifty tiny houses in my back field? Good possibility.
I think you should, Walter. Migrant worker housing.
Airbnb.
Yeah.
So is this something that we would want Kristen to like, maybe to give us some guidance on, or at least break it down for us a little bit?
You should talk to the town manager about that in our legal budget.
So then we become lawyers when it comes to this, is like, if she doesn't do it, like, we're gonna just read between the lines and make assumptions on, on how we are reading it or proceeding.
Well, I think if I, I was saying, Senator Bennett, we need probably to wait for the main municipal to digest it, like, what was some guidance?
They, they come out with a packet, in, in some number of months, they'll come out with, with their definitions and explanations for everything that went through that affects municipalities. So you can check with, the town manager will get that copy, so keep checking with him, and he'll, he'll have an explanation at least.
But it's in place now, correct?
Ninety days. This is where your town manager leadership comes into play. You're gonna have to talk to the council and work with them and make decisions if we don't have a legal budget.
Yeah, because we're getting into building season, right? So that's my concern.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much building is gonna go on, twelve dollars a two by four.
It, it's slow, it is slow.
Yes, and on the electrical grid side also. Yes, and on the electrical grid side also, it's very slow. And they usually have hostess setting now. They're not. Do you have anything else, Alan?
I worked with the new code enforcement officer today. His name is Ryan Smith. And he is more capable than I was when I took this position. Just gonna say that.
Where does he come from?
He's, lives in Auburn. He's a builder, works in manufactured housing. And knows a significant number of contractors, knows lots of uh, building code and lots of rules and knows a lot about a lot of things.
This is his first coach job.
It is.
Young fellow, old fellow.
He looks really young, but I don't think he's that young. He has two children.
Good, good man.
Good guy.
Yeah.
Good guy.
Is there anything else?
I, I would just like to say thank you, Alan, for your time, your guidance, um, your knowledge as you get ready to exit and move on to begin better. Appreciate it, um, educating us with a lot of this stuff. And hopefully we can kind of continue in the motion in which we've been going, working on the codification piece and.
Great to see you leaving. It's been a pleasure to work with.
Yes.
It's been a learning, a shared learning experience all the way along. In a good way. And that being said, motion, I am leaving with Alan. But I am, this is my last day. Is that writing or have it in writing? Oh, okay.
Well, thank you for your time as well. Wasn't expecting that, well? No.
Neither was I. Things are happening quicker than they're supposed to be in life. It's my time to enjoy them. Okay.
My second.
All was in favor? Vote.
Got it.
Thank you, everyone.
Well, we'll still have a forum.
So just so you know, next month, and TJ, you'll need to listen to this. Next month, I'll have the, at the next month's meeting, I'll have the finding of facts, conclusions of law about this for you to review and sign. Okay. Yep. I will not have them, but Ryan will. You too. You too. Thanks.
Oh, TJ.